Hi, I want to welcome everybody to the Town of Atherton City Council's June 18th, 2012 Regular Council Meeting. I'd like to have the pleasure of delegations.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
I want to thank everybody for attending. Clerk, can I get the roll call, please?
Councilmember Maynard?
Here.
Councilmember Lewis?
Here.
Vice Mayor DeBulio?
Here.
Mayor Wiest?
Here. And we have two presentations this evening, and Chief, here are the first one of Office Forward, two of our new officers. And Lamont, I already know.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council, ladies and gentlemen of Atherton, and thank you so much for being here. I'm telling you, this is an extreme pleasure to be able to introduce two of our new members of the Atherton Police Department. Josh Gallow, if you'd come up here, please, and Sergeant Lamont Crisso. Lamont, come over here, I see you're to the CCL. We went to great lengths to get both of these individuals on our department. I'm extremely impressed and proud of both of them. They're just great people, and we're very fortunate to have them here. They both have 20 on their resume. One has 20 days, and one has 20 years. All right? I'll let you figure out which is which, but just really two outstanding gentlemen. I'll talk about Officer Gallow first. He came to our staff's attention up at the academy, and he was in some training there. I believe it was TJ that was up there and saw you, and he said, "Man, this guy's got his act together. He's very diligent, very concerned, loves the idea of being a police officer. It was your lifelong ambition." And TJ says, "Hey, you need to get this guy down here and talk to him." I said, "Okay, TJ." So I brought Lamont, brought Josh down and spoke with him, and just really thought a lot of them, like I said, it's been his lifelong dream to be a police officer. He worked, prior to that, he's a married man with children, and worked as a bail bondsman, a criminal investigator, and a recovery agent for the state of California. Played two years of college baseball with the San Jose City College, and is in the process of finishing up his undergraduate degree in criminal justice. And he's joined here by his wife Erin and daughter Avery tonight, so. And on my left, your right, is Sergeant Lamont Crisso. He also had a lifelong dream of being in law enforcement, followed in his father's footsteps, and eventually got hired at the San Jose Police Department. Started out in law enforcement when he was 24-years-of-age, and has an extensive resume with the San Jose Police Department. He was a patrol officer, field training officer, worked in the gang unit, gang intelligence, had a number of undercover detective assignments, and worked in internal affairs. Many of you might have already seen him before tonight. He was actually known, he doesn't want me to say this, funny name, as the face of San Jose. He was on one of their recruiting bulletins. Lo and behold, I'm sitting there thinking about hiring Lamont, and I'm watching TV, and here he is on the news, saying, "Hey, didn't I hear, I'm going to hire that guy." He's the face of San Jose, but now he's the face of Atherton, and we're just so pleased to have him here. Lamont's wife, 16-years-old, Elvia is here, and their two children, Kayla and Ajene, is here. Not bad. You owe me. So anyway, I'm going to administer the oath as Chief of Police. My responsibility, that's where both of you end, so I think I have, if you sit over here, if you would, and please raise your right hand. I speak your name.
I, Josh Gallow.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will defend and support
That I will defend and support.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution
And allegiance to the Constitution.
Of the United States
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will
And that I will.
Well and faithfully
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Excellent. (applause) As a matter of tradition, family members are going to pin the badges on their husbands and fathers, so. Congratulations. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. So nice to have you. Really appreciate the service.
Josh, Lamont? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Be safe. Councilmembers and members.
We're thrilled to have you.
Ladies' speeches?
No.
Those speeches were good. We want to give the family members an opportunity, and we want to thank all of you for coming and attending. Any councilmembers want to say anything?
Just like, Chief has done a great job in building up the department over the last few years, and these two officers are a great example of that, and I appreciate the diligence that he's brought forward.
And I totally support that.
I'm just thrilled that our Chief of Police has been able to recruit such high standards. He, if you don't know already, he has very high standards, because we're a very special community, and everyone has high standards, so you are part of the best of the best for us in Atherton. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and be safe.
Be safe.
And we'll thank your family, and give you an opportunity to get out
To leave.
Before you get wrapped in the arrests.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. In the second presentation of North Far Oaks New Plan, represented as the North Far Oaks? Yeah, you guys.
I knew it wasn't warm, so.
No, it's a session, and There's a button for the (inaudible)
Good evening, President Vice, members of the council, Manager Rogers. My name is Peggy Jensen. I'm Deputy County Manager for the County of San Mateo, and I'm pleased to be here this evening to update you on a very important project the county is working on. We have a countywide initiative called, or county initiative called, North Far Oaks Forward. It's doing a number of projects in the North Far Oaks community, which is just adjacent to Atherton. Those projects include our recently opened North Far Oaks Health Center, about a half-a-million dollars, with some additional matching money from the city of Redwood City for an expansion of our Redwood, of the North Far Oaks Library, and a wonderful collaborative project that the county is participating in, but was actually initiated by the Rotary Club of Redwood City with help from Kaboom, Shutterfly, and other organizations, which is the development of, or actually redevelopment of Friendship Park, which includes, as you can see at the top, a children's play area, and I think about 30 community garden plots that were just developed in May, and you can already see they're quite looming. So those three projects are part of our North Far Oaks Forward Initiative, but actually the largest project is the redesign and redevelopment of Middlefield Road. And the area of Middlefield Road that we're focusing on is from Fifth Avenue to Pacific Avenue. What I'd like to share with you tonight is some information about the outreach activities that we've been undertaking to get feedback from the community, from the business members, from the visitors to North Far Oaks about what they would like to see on the redesigned Middlefield Road. Our outreach efforts have included a variety of activities. We've had newsletters, we've had door hangers, mailbox hangers, postcards, lots of events. Actually, part of our team are here tonight, Ashley, Quintana, and LA Dollman, who are both bilingual, have spent a significant amount of time in the community, and it is to their credit that we've gotten the results that we have. In addition to some, one of the key components of our outreach activity was a survey where we asked folks what they wanted to see on Middlefield Road, what kind of redesign they'd like to see. We also held meetings with specific groups. This happens to be a meeting with the auto body shop owners. We also met with other business owners and other property owners in the area, and all of that culminated in two community meetings, which about 120 people in total attended at the end of April. All of those, the survey, the community meetings, the preliminary meetings, ended up in over 2,000 comments, over 2,000 residents of the area giving us feedback on what they would like to see. I'd like to give you a little bit of background on the survey, which we received over 1,300 survey responses. Over 50% were in Spanish, and about 200 of those 1,300 were online. Of the respondents, about half were residents of the name of the North Far Oaks community. A third were, a third percenters in that, about 320 were workers, but I think we were most proud of the fact of getting 84 business owners to respond. That's a fairly significant number, given the area that we were working on. In terms of the age range, the majority of people were between 31 and 64, but Ashley and LA did a lot of work with the youth initiative, and we were very fortunate to have a number of folks under the age of 18 who actually responded to the survey, too. And in terms of how people use Middlefield Road, the majority of them use it as a transit route to either go north or south, but a significant percentage use it as a commercial area, their shopping district, and a number of folks also have occupations there. They're employed on the Middlefield Road area. So on these surveys that we have, on the 1,300 surveys, and at the newest community meetings that we held, we also received about 500 comments, written comments, from attendees and survey respondents. And when we analyzed all this data, we came up, we realized that there were essentially four themes that folks were interested in, and four main concerns that they had. Those were safety, access to Middlefield Road, creating an attractive Main Street-type environment on Middlefield Road, and also creating an active and vibrant location. So I'd like to share a little bit of what folks said. Regarding safety, people were very concerned about pedestrian safety. They wanted to see improvements there, and they specifically suggested more and more definitively marked street crossings. They wanted additional street lighting. They wanted, suggested the speed be reduced along Middlefield Road, and the addition of more stoplights. For bicyclists, the recommendations to improve safety included very distinct and wide bike lanes, and also very clearly marked bike routes throughout the neighborhood. And then finally, for people who are driving their cars through the community, there is a desire to see increased visibility, so make it easier, so they would feel safer while they were driving. They also encouraged the creation of the replacement of diagonal parking with parallel parking, which people feel is more, creates more visibility for the driver. And finally, they wanted easier access both turning on and off of Middlefield Road. The second area that people wanted improvements was access, and that included for pedestrians, wider sidewalks, sidewalks and crossings that were clearly marked for both pedestrians and drivers, and also increased trash collections, trash cans to make it a cleaner area. For bicyclists, also mentioned quite frequently the bike lanes, but also bike routes, areas where people could safely store their bikes while they were using Middlefield Road as their destination. And then finally, for people who drove cars, a very common theme was the need for more parking. Currently, there's a, there's a mix of diagonal and parallel parking on Middlefield Road, and the feeling is there's inadequate parking today. If in fact we go toward all parallel parking, the parking will decrease by about 30%. People were very strongly concerned about having sufficient parking, whether that's through a dedicated parking lot or parking garage. They didn't really care, they just feel there needs to be additional parking. Related to parking, there was a desire to have some dedicated handicap spaces, and also an interest in having time-limited parking, not so much paved parking, but time-limited parking. In terms of an attractive Main Street, what people wanted to see was landscaping, benches, areas to sit. They also wanted to see sort of a complete design, a sense of a wholeness and consistency in design through the whole area that's being redeveloped. In terms of cleanliness, they wanted, they talked about having a business improvement district, or sidewalk cleaning, potentially more street cleaning, and also additional receptacles for both recycling and trash. And then in terms of zoning and building design, there's a lot, there are a lot of comments about billboards, and the desire to not even have as many billboards, or essentially eliminate billboards altogether from the area. There was also interest in having mixed use along Middlefield Road, mixed-use buildings which should have commercial on the first floor, and potentially affordable housing, or other types of residential areas on the upper, on the upper floors. And finally, they're interested in having an active and vibrant community, and this reflected in a desire to have an area where they can have cultural festivals, cultural events, farmers' markets, and other types of community gatherings along Middlefield Road for that neighborhood. So from all of this information we got, we clearly got the message that the community wants to see wider sidewalks, they want to see bike lanes along Middlefield Road, and they would also like to see parallel parking. But one of the key questions that we were asking them, one of the questions, the key question that will determine what the engineers actually design, was how many lanes should Middlefield Road be through that section of Redwood, of the unincorporated area of the county? The question we asked was, do you want three lanes with a center turn lane, or do you want four lanes as it currently is now? And what we heard from folks was not definitive. 49% wanted three lanes, 41% wanted four lanes, and 10% were undecided. So what that means is we've got a little bit more work to do. So in terms of our next steps, right now, we started, actually, in May, we have given this presentation to the North Far Oaks Community Council, to the Board of Supervisors, and we're going to be presenting it to 16 other groups, both residential groups, community groups, youth groups, city councils, and school councils, to get, to let them know what we are, what we've been doing, and what we're thinking about doing. So that's what's currently going on. In addition, our Public Works Department is doing intensive traffic analysis of the three-lane option and the four-lane option. They're looking at not only the impact on Middlefield Road, but also on the adjacent Moving into July, we're going to be starting, we will share that traffic analysis with the community first on the 17th of July as a study station of the North Far Oaks Community Council, and then on the 24th of July, at a public meeting that the council will be hosting. On the 28th of August, the council is going to pull together all this information, both the traffic analysis, the survey results, the community groups that we've been meeting with, and also all the community feedback that we've received, and they will be making a design recommendation at their meeting on the 28th of August. That recommendation will be presented back to the community at a public meeting on the 23rd of September, and to the Board of Supervisors on the 21st of October. Once a design is selected and approved by the board, we're going to be going into the final design and the construction phase, and we anticipate that it'll take potentially four to five years to complete all the work, because this is a major project. The steps in the construction start with our Public Works Department doing an initial design. Once we have the street configuration selected, they will do a preliminary design, which they will share with all the utilities. PG&E will lead the undergrounding project, but as you all probably know, that's a very complicated effort, because you've got to work with all the business owners, everyone who has some sort of line on that utility pole, which includes the cable TV folks, the lighting district, and all the electrical utilities. So that will be ongoing, while our Public Works Department is developing the final design documents and preparing to go to bid. Once the design documents are reached, and we get the proposals back, we'll award a contract, and we will go into the street reconstruction, which is, and this whole process, we expect probably four years, four to five years. So that concludes sort of the research, the work that we've been doing, gives you an update of where we're going on this. In terms of future updates, we'd be happy to come back and give your council, your council updates, but you also can visit our North Far Oaks Forward website at www.nfoforward.org for updates, where there'll be additional information about what we're doing and project status information. So Ashley, LA, and I would be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you. Thanks. No, I spent some time with Warren, Elizabeth, and Ashley last week, and I appreciate the time that they spent in listening to at least our concerns. A lot of the, I'm sure you'll hear from the other council members, some of the things that you're looking at dovetail very nicely with what we're trying to do here with our Bike Ped Master Plan, and some of the things we're looking at in some other areas, so I think that that's good. I did ask some questions during the session about the number of accidents and things like that. Do you have any of that data?
We don't.
That have occurred there?
I don't have it this evening. That's something we'll be asking our Public Works Department and our Sheriff's Office to gather from.
Okay. And then I guess I, it would be nice at least to get an update here, since many of our residents go down that part of the road. When you get to your construction plans, if we can understand really how the construction is going to be phased, because I'm sure that the construction process will cause some backups, it'd be nice to be alerted to that.
Certainly.
Thank you.
This is very exciting, and I think you guys have done an excellent job. It's, it's just something that is long overdue for that stretch of our community, and you've been very thoughtful in the way you've gone about it, and it's interesting to me to see your results, because it seems common, common man, because when we are doing our Bike Ped, pedestrian master plan, a lot of those same issues are occurring. It's just across the board. People want safe crossing areas for pedestrians, safe bikes, ways to go, places, more and more people are using their bikes. I was coming over here tonight, I live on Alejandra, and trying to get across El Camino, and right in front of me, a pedestrian was walking north, and a bicyclist was coming south, right as I was trying to, and there's no way on El Camino that they can even share the road there, and so to have a safe bike and path and cars, and to beautify it with trees, and keep it clean, it just raises everyone's self-image and, you know, the sense of community. So, thank you very much, and all the other little logistics and things I think will obviously get worked out, so.
Well, I think the way you guys did, in terms of outreach, it was really an effort that should be a model for how people do it. It really is impressive. And if you do to that community, which clearly has needed it for a long time, anything like you did to the Broadway area, near where the theaters came in, I think it will dramatically transform the area. It's really wonderful work.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that, as everybody has already said, that's a wonderful job that the county's doing, and I'm sure that the residents and the people that do utilize the area, I mean, it's a very heavily flowed roadway in that particular section towards Costco, so obviously, reduction in lanes would obviously be something we'd be looking at, because as well, we're taking those considerations in for some traffic issues in Fifth Avenue, north, south lane area, so it might influence traffic our way, so we'd definitely like to know, because that would maybe help us make better decisions as we move forward this way as well. So, thank you, and thank you guys for that tremendous outreach.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you again. At this point, I'd like to go ahead and ask for any public comments for anything that is not on the agenda. Would anybody like to make any comments? Please.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Laura Finnegan. I'm from Hip Housing. I know later this evening you're having your budget discussion, and I just wanted to thank you for your consideration of the funding recommendation that's been put in your budget. I was just at the Manlo Park Street Fair, setting up a table for Hip Housing to distribute information about our housing programs, and several people came up to the table to let me know that they've been receiving, you know, astronomical rent increases beyond their means, especially seniors. This is something that we hear every day at Hip Housing. In fact, at our annual luncheon last Friday, we had a senior returning housemate who's an emancipated foster youth speak about their experience in our home sharing program. We have a new partnership with another nonprofit called Star Vista to help place emancipated foster youth in home sharing. They provide a housing scholarship, and we provide the housing. So this was a great demonstration of a home sharing match that then finished senior, who was struggling with their housing costs, and a young person who needed affordable housing. So we very much thank you for your support and the recommendation this evening, and we can't do this good work without our partners, and we just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you, Lamont. Any other public comments, if there is not on the agenda? Seeing none, go ahead, close the public comments. Move to the, there is no report out of session, correct? Correct, since we didn't have one. Seeing none. Real quickly, you have the report. Happy to answer any questions. Staff's here to answer any questions as well. Any questions for George? Seeing none. Wow, George, yes, you've done a good job. Go ahead, and we'll move on to community organization round eight. We had, we'll move on to the consent calendar, items number eight through 25. Any members of the council want to pull an item? Eight through 25.
I'd like to have a quick conversation on 12, 18, and 25.
So I can have that conversation now, starting with 12?
Yeah, pretty good. First off, on the amendment to the contract, I know that there has been some discussion along these lines, I have two comments. The first comment I echoed the other day, the technology allocation, again, I'm not 100% on board with the, you know, having taxpayer dollars buy an asset that becomes the personal property of the city manager, as opposed to remaining of the city. But secondly, the memorialization of the conversation in the, in the document that was prepared by the city attorney indicated that this was an annual benefit as well, and the discussion, as I recall, said that it would be, could be renewed, but it would be a one-year thing. And those are my two comments.
Thank you, Lamont.
Nice question.
Please.
I think is the contract, the annual contract that is up for renegotiation every year?
Right.
So it's an annual contract?
Yes, and the annual, and this is just to indicate that it was not a monthly benefit, but it was an annual benefit, one-time, because it's a one-time contract, term.
So, I'd say a contract.
Perfect. Bill, you okay with that?
Yeah, I have a little heartburn that I expressed, but other than that, I appreciate the explanation.
Vice Mayor Baldwin?
Just to clarify, that the intent was that the technology, which it's true, would be owned by George, not owned by the city, but it would be technology that would be used, not necessarily exclusively, but it would definitely be technology that would be used at work.
Correct.
I don't know if that made it into this.
Yeah, and I think one of the reasons was, is because currently, he's using his personal technology, and, you know, kind of 100% practically, and it would just make it easier, and you may have more enhanced technology, right?
That's correct. But, Bill, I think that in terms of the contract, it would not, for example, include purchasing stereo for apps to use, which I know
No, no.
I know George is aware of, but
Only if he purchased it for me.
Yeah, no.
But the language in the contract says personal technology purchase, so it could, that could be broadly interpreted.
You know, it's, I took this out of my notes. It was sitting there, and it's one of those areas where I don't think there's a very, at least with my level of understanding what was going on, it was very difficult to craft into concise language what exactly was meant. I think there's an understanding what was meant, and the city manager, he either lives up to your expectations or
I'm from Hip Housing. I know later this evening you're having your budget discussion, and I just wanted to thank you for your consideration of the funding recommendation that's been put in your budget. I was just at the Menlo Park Street Fair, setting up a table for Hip Housing to distribute information about our housing programs, and several people came out to the table to let me know that they've been receiving, you know, astronomical rent increases beyond their means, especially seniors. This is something that we hear every day at Hip Housing. In fact, at our annual luncheon last Friday, we had a senior training housemate who's an emancipated foster youth speak about their experience in our home sharing program. We have a new partnership with another nonprofit called Star Vista to help place emancipated foster youth in home sharing. They provide a housing scholarship, and we provide the housing. So this was a great demonstration of a home sharing match that benefited a senior who was struggling with their housing costs, and a young person who needed affordable housing. So we very much thank you for your support in the recommendation this evening, and we can't do this good work without our partners, and we just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you, Lamont. Any other public comments for items not on the agenda? Seeing none, go ahead, close the public comments. Move to the, there is no report out of session, correct? Correct, since we can have one. City manager.
Just real quickly, you have the report. Happy to answer any questions. Staff here to answer any questions as well.
Any questions for George? Seeing none. Wow, George, you've done a good job. Go ahead, and we'll move on to community organization roundup. We had, we'll move on to the consent calendar, item number eight through 25. Any members of the council want to pull an eight through 25?
I'd like to have a quick conversation on 12, 18, and 25.
So I can have that conversation now, starting with 12?
Yeah, it would depend. First off, on the amendment to the contract, I know that there has been some discussion along these lines, I have two comments. The first comment I echoed the other day, the technology allocation, again, I'm not 100% on board with the, you know, having taxpayer dollars buy an asset that becomes the personal property of the city manager, as opposed to remaining the city. But secondly, the memorialization of the conversation in the, in the document that was prepared by the city attorney indicated that this was an annual benefit as well, and the discussion, as I recall, said that it would be, could be renewed, but it would be a one-year thing. Those are my two comments.
Thank you, Lamont.
Nice question.
Please.
I think is the contract an annual contract that is up for renegotiation every year?
Correct.
So it's an annual contract?
Yes, and the annual, and this is just to indicate that it was not a monthly benefit, but it was an annual benefit one time, because it's a one-time contract term.
So I would say a contract.
Phil, you okay with that?
Yeah, I have a little heartburn that I expressed, but other than that, I appreciate the explanation.
Vice Mayor Bolton?
Just to clarify, that the intent was that the technology, which is true, would be owned by George, owned by the city, but it would be technology that would be used, not necessarily exclusively, but it would definitely be technology that would be used at work.
Correct.
I don't know if that made it into this.
Yeah, and I think one of the reasons was because currently, he's using his personal technology and, you know, kind of 100% practically, and it would just make it easier. And you need to have enhanced technology, right?
That's correct. But, Bill, I think that in terms of the contract, it would not, for example, include purchasing stereo for apps to use, which I know George is aware of, but
Only if he purchased it for me.
Yeah.
But the language in the contract said personal technology purchases, so it could, that could be broadly interpreted.
You know, it's, I took this out of my notes. I was sitting there, and it's one of those areas where I don't think there's a very, at least with my level of understanding what was going on, it was very difficult to craft into concise language what exactly was meant. I think there's an understanding what was meant, and the city manager, he either lives up to your expectations, or he doesn't, in which case, you know, the next time around it could be
He won't get it.
Well, it could be worse. Could be in trouble for not following, following your, thank you for saying that. I think you did, but it, I think the, the understanding was there, and I tried to put into a way of, I mean, because I, I don't think I could ever explain personal technology and get it right.
No. You're not technology.
No, it's not me.
Well, yeah, you need, you need a device that automatically attaches the attachments to your emails. That would do you, that would be a good piece of advice.
I learned that if you, if you try to send it before that little wheel stops going around, it doesn't go anywhere, and it makes it really miserable.
But, but again, you know, my, my comment was, is that, you know, taxpayer dollars are buying an asset. He could pick whatever asset he wants, as a city manager, buy an asset under $15,000, he doesn't need necessarily our approval, just put it in the budget, which this is in the budget, but it doesn't become his personal property if, if for some reason he were to leave the town tomorrow, that asset that he specified would remain in the town. He would clear off his stuff, the same as if any of us leave. The council, we end up giving back these iPads that were very expensive, and that we have to operate under very detailed processes that Bill drew up for us, so it just, the two didn't match up. I've expressed that before, and so I wouldn't belabor the point any further.
Thank you, Bill. You want to go ahead? 18, please.
Sure. 18 is the planning department. So I had some quick questions, if I can get to my annotated notes, sorry.
Technology, basically?
Yeah, it is. I don't, you know, I could use $3,000 to buy something, but it's not, anyway. Okay, so first off, I see this is essentially an Evergreen contract, and so I didn't really understand, since it's renewable automatically unless within 90 days we go ahead and do something. So I wasn't really sure, other than, for whatever reason, we're also putting a term on it. So that was comment one. Secondly, I appreciate that staff did a quick analysis on the, on the benchmarking to give everyone a good feel on the pricing that's in there. Yeah, I still believe that we